Thank you. Good morning. The January 12th, 2020 Virtual Work Session of the Anorito County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Present.
Mr. Volkey, I understand Mr. Volkey is absent. Uh, Mr. Pruski is next. I understand that he is absent. Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian?
Present.
And Ms. Lacy.
Thank you. Good morning. The January 12th, 2020
Uh, Madam Auditor, Ms. Smith?
Is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
And Madam Legislative Council, Ms. Shewitt?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Okay.
Madam Chair, uh, all council members are present except Mr. Volkey and Mr. Pruski to wrap. And I understand Mr. Volkey is absent. Uh, Ms. Pruski is next. I understand that he is absent.
We might not really get with the presentation or bill, but we're beginning the resolution.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian?
Present.
And Ms. Lacy?
Which the administration can go ahead when you're ready.
Good morning. The January 12th, 2020
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Pete Barron with the administration.
And Madam Auditor, Ms. Smith?
Uh, joining me today, um, DPW is Mr. Michelson and Mr. Herubic.
Ms. Hare?
And from law, Ms. Kenny. Um, state law, and first of all, thank you for allowing us to meet this resolution upfront. Uh, state law requires that each MS4 permit holder submit a financial assurance plan by February 21st, 2021, uh, and shall demonstrate that the county has sufficient funding in the current fiscal year and subsequent fiscal year budgets to meet its estimated cost for the two-year period immediately following the filing date. Financial Assurance Plan. The county may not file a financial assurance plan until the local government's county holds a hearing on it. State law, and first of all, thank you for allowing us to meet this. Now, the county can demonstrate its financial state law capabilities that each MS4 report submit financial assurance. With that, I, we are ready to enter any 2021, uh, and shall demonstrate that the county has sufficient funding in the current fiscal year and subsequent fiscal year budgets.
Too quick, my view.
Ms. Hare? Jessica Hare, District 7. My only question is, I'm trying to compare this with last year and how we're doing, um, increasing the costs with, give me a rundown in terms of, I remember doing this last year as well and it seems like marketing up on dollars and the money just hasn't been set aside.
Mr. Michelson is probably the best person for the word, probably.
Sure, this is Eric Michelson, Deputy Director, Bureau of Watership Protection and Restoration. So the last time we, uh, went through this process, I know it seems like last year, it was actually two years ago. Time flies when you're having fun. Um, so, um,
Basically gone. The low hanging fruit, let's say, is, is gone at this point. And really, from here on out, the work that the county is going to need to do, uh, is all going to be new restoration, um, efforts. So, um, it is a little bit less in terms of the actual acreage that we're going to have to treat. But like I say, we've spent most of the past five or six years really going for low hanging fruit to the extent that we can.
Okay, that's helpful. I'll email you if I have anything else. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing done.
Basically gone. The low hanging fruit, let's say, is, is gone at this point. From here on out, the work that the county is going to need to do,
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
On our agenda. Um, we now have a number 10920, which is
It is a little bit less in terms of the actual acreage that we're going to have to treat. But like I say, we've spent most of the past
Ms. Rodvian?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. Um, this is a really simple bill that, um, basically reexamines the, uh, registration fee for short-term residential rent rentals, which was actually something we discussed quite a bit when we, um, initially passed the legislation to, um, you know, basically formalized the process for short-term residential rentals. And, um, looking at this, um, and hearing from constituents, one of the concerns was that, um, because the economic conditions are not what they were when we passed this, I, I think, you may recall, this is probably one of the last bills that we passed, um, before, um, you know, we went into all the COVID protocols and we had our initial, um, down and whatnot.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. Uh, this is a really simple bill that, um, basically reexamines the, uh, registration fee for short-term residential rentals,
Um, we have set the registration fee at $400 to cover two years. So it's really $200 per year, but collected
the legislation to, um,
two-year, you know, plucked up front for two years. And, um, that was based on estimates that we had from, um, inspection and permits. Um, looking at this and considering the economic conditions that short-term residential rental hosts are facing now, um, I thought it would be a reasonable thing to, um, kind of shift the burden, um, to the counties for these initial periods and require a, um, $100 fee for a two-year term. Since this is new, since this is, um, a new process, we don't really know if the estimates are going to, um, match the actual costs. So, you know, we initially put the burden on the host. Um, we are, this bill would bring it back to the county. Uh, it would also refund any, uh, hosts that have already paid because how fair would it be to do, um, you know, give anyone going forward a $100, um, registration for two years when others have already paid a $400? So the plan is to provide refunds to hosts that have already registered. And then during this period of time, examine what the actual costs are. Examine how, um, you know, how the, um, the actual costs, you know, did they measure up? And then set the fee, you know, likely with another piece of legislation reverting to the original bill or possibly legislation that would continue this fee once we have a little bit more concrete data. Um, I think it will also allow, it will also encourage, um, especially in the, again, this is all about economic climate, um, encourage hosts to actually register. Um, a number of hosts had indicated that they heard buzz from, um, other short-term residential rental hosts that the fee was, uh, on the prohibitive side. And then it might actually encourage them to sort of go underground, so to speak. And that was something we wanted to disparage. So, um, I hope you will support this, um, legislation. I think, given the economic climate that we're in right now, um, and we want to be, we want to put these, um, hosts in a good position, um, to rebound as quickly as possible when, um, you know, when we finally are past, um, you know, the restrictions that are, um, that, that COVID has, um, required and, uh, you know, have, have been a, a challenge for, for business owners. So I feel like this really puts them in a good position to rebound, you know, thinking specifically about District 6, although this wouldn't apply to, um, the city limits, within the city limits of Annapolis, it would apply to the county parts of, um, District 6. But, um, you know, thinking about the boat show, thinking about, um, uh, induction weekend, thinking about, um, oh my goodness, a graduation at the Naval Academy, and I'm blanking on the, the formal name. Um, this is going to kill me. Anyway. What's that?
Commissioning week?
Thank you. Commissioning, commissioning. Um, I appreciate that. All I could think of was commencement, which is, and commissioning week. Um, and, and just thinking about those, um, you know, those specific occasions when short-term residential rentals are in very high demand, which, you know, we, we don't know how things are going to pan out. Now, our, our case numbers are still pretty terrible, but hopefully by, um, this summer, we'll be looking at, at something positive with the vaccine coming out, um, getting case numbers under control and getting communities spread under control. Um, with that, I ask for your support and I'm happy to take any questions.
Do my colleagues have any questions at this time? Ms. Fiedler, look.
Thank you. I, uh, left my yellow flags in the office. Um, I guess my, my first question would be, when looking at this, um, scenario, was any thought given to looking at a refund set up through the CARES money or utilizing that, um, resource rather than revising the code?
Uh, no. I, I actually don't know if this would be an appropriate use of CARES money, um, but I really didn't look into that. That wasn't the goal. I mean, that wasn't the, that wasn't, I mean, I guess that's an interesting idea. I don't know if that would be allowed, but that's, I didn't look into that.
Okay, just, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think of other options and, and what the, and trying to understand the conversation since it doesn't sound like this will be, um, a brief period of adjustment, maybe long-term, but that's, um, not known right now. And, uh, just thinking about how everything fiscally related was done briefly through CARES, that was my line of thinking.
Yeah, I, and I appreciate that. I think it's, I mean, the way the bill is written, um, it would revert back to the $400 registration fee when the state level emergency proclamation has, um, ended. And so that is the default, um, you know, sort of ending of this, uh, of this bill. However, I do think that, you know, you, I'm sure you remember that when this passed initially, there was a lot of conversation about this fee. And I think, uh, you know, we all agreed that down the road, we would take a little time to look and see, does the fee match the actual costs? And, um, you know, in six months from now, we may have the data to allow us to do that.
Ms. Pickard?
Well, I would like to hear from the administration on this one, but, um, before we do that, I, I, do we typically refund, once we change the code, change a permitting fee, do we typically refund folks that have already paid it? I'm not, I'm not following the nexus here. Is this because of COVID and their short-term rentals have taken a hit to their revenue? Therefore, we want to give them a break on the registration fee for those that are registering now? Or is this looking to completely change the registration fee because we've learned something about what it really costs to administer the permits?
So, if, Madam Chair, may I take that question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. Um, so it's really a matter of fairness. So this, um, as I mentioned before, this bill passed right before COVID hit the county. And it was, um, I don't unfortunately know the, um, you, you know, the effective date of the original bill, but it was basically early on in COVID. So to me, it's a matter of fairness. If we have hosts, um, property owner hosts, that immediately during this time of, you know, financial difficulty, went ahead and paid the $400 registration fee. And we are now, you know, um, seven, eight, I guess maybe actually more like nine or 10 months later, saying that, um, we want to encourage behavior by lowering the fee. It's a matter of fairness to me that those folks that sort of did the right thing right up front be put in the same position that those folks who would be registering their properties now would be. So it's really a matter of timing. It's because this bill came into place, um, you know, right at the same time that, um, the COVID, um, emergency hit and that, you know, the economic consequences were roughly, uh, coinciding as well. So it's because of that timing and I'm just a sense of, of fairness.
Would you like to, um, have the administration respond also?
Absolutely.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, Pete Barron with the administration. Uh, joining me is Ms. McQuade from Finance, uh, from a snowy field, uh, Mr. Greg Africa from IMP, uh, and, uh, from law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. Uh, the administration understands, uh, what the sponsors are attempting to achieve with this bill. We, we have no opposition, uh, to it. I think, um, we pulled some numbers and so as of the end of the year, as of December 29th, um, we have had, uh, 89 applications and 79 short-term rentals, um, pay the $400 fee. If we were to, uh, if this were to pass, we would have to issue a refund in the amount of about $23,000, almost $24,000. Um, this is an industry that has been particularly hard-hit, um, by the global pandemic. And the administration, um, appreciates what the sponsors are attempting to achieve, given the fact that this fee came into a place as, as Ms. Rodvian stated, o- almost concurrently with, with, um, the shutdowns in, in March. So with that, happy to have anybody here answer any specific questions from council members. And Ms. Pickard, sorry, Pete Barron with the administration, you did ask a question if we typically refund? And I'm going to ask, um, Ms. McQuade to answer that, but to my knowledge, it's, this would be pretty unusual for us to issue a, a refund like this. Sorry.
I'm not aware of that. Um, Mr. Africa might know specifically for any licenses, if they, uh, issue any refunds. I, I haven't really seen, you know, a massive amount of going through, um, Rexon Parks, you know, when we canceled all the Rexon Parks, we, we refunded all their fees, but I don't know, you know, en masse, whether, um, Mr. Africa has any.
Yeah, uh, Greg Africa, inspections and permits. Um, it depends on what fee, uh, we're talking about. Some, some fees are specifically, uh, restricted by, by code and how we handle refunds. Uh, other fees, um, the codes are silent on it. But as far as, for example, building permit fees, the application fees, we, we do not refund them. Um, if the, the builder, uh, opts not to continue, uh, with his project. So it's, it's, it's unusual. We, uh, it's unusual to refund fees. We, we always refer back to the code section to determine whether we have the authority to do that or not.
Ms. Shewitt, did you have a question or a comment about what was just said, or can I come back to you later?
It's about what was just said.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Linda Shewitt, Legislative Council. Um, we did check with the Office of Law on this point because I don't think refunds are a run-of-the-mill kind of thing done by the county, but it was confirmed by the Office of Law that this has occurred in the past and that, that it was okay to allow for the refund. Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Um, I think this question is for Ms. McQuade and it piggybacks a little bit off of what Councilwoman Pickard was asking before. Um, in terms of, I think I understand that the sponsor's intent was, was some relief related to COVID, but we are now 10 months in and it sounds like 79, um, to pay the fee. Do we have an idea of what the actual cost is for, for administration of this, uh, licensing? Because that might actually help inform whether this type of, um, lowering of the fee is appropriate as a COVID response or as a more long-term kind of permanent thing.
Sorry, trying to get unmuted there. Um, um, the, the collection of the fee, um, would relate back to inspections and permits, fee that, that the expenses that would cost them, I think, for, um, maintaining, um, this fee, administering it. I know that they were first looking to, they had said that they were looking to hire an OS 6 to administer the program. Um, that was going to be approximately an estimate of $48,500 for the first year cost. I don't know whether they've done that or not. Mr. Africa could probably add to that.
Mr. Africa, do you have an idea of actions?
Yes, um, that position was not appropriated in the budget. So we're basically spreading the burden right now. We have, in, in, in the staff licensing, we, we have about four, um, appropriate positions. We have four appropriate positions and two of them right now are vacant because, uh, of retirement. So we are pulling other resources from other similarly strained units to, to come and process what we have to process here. So the, 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 the funding process will have to be picked up by someone else in, in the organization to, to make that happen. Um, and we will have to continue to the rest of the year or even next year, um, with, with the same number of folks un- until we get that appropriated position that was part of the intent of this bill.
Uh, okay, Jessica Hare, District 7. So I, if I understand you correctly, you don't have an idea of actual costs yet.
No, no, we, we don't because, uh, we're, we're spreading the burden to a lot, with a lot of people and, and we don't have time sheets where we charge our time at the specific activities.
Okay, I think Ms. Pickard had her flag up first and then I'll call in.
So when we refund to the 79, uh, permit license holders who are refunding $300 so that they have then in effect paid the $100 for a two-year license, is that? So that's one question. And then two, um, well, that might be my only question. So well, we're going to move forward for an undetermined amount of time on the $100 two-year licensing fee. Is that my understanding it right?
Madam Chair, if I could address this.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. So, um, undetermined to the extent that we don't know when the emergency proclamations will come to an end. Um, but the intent is that we would reevaluate and start to look and see if we can determine the actual costs of administering, um, administering the registration for this. The, um, the entire purpose of this bill is, um, is an emergen, well, it's an emergency bill, but it is, um, economic relief is really the, and the intent of this bill. Um, because this coincided with the beginning of COVID. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I'm not opposed to lowering the fee. I think in general, I like the idea of lowering fees. Um, where I have questions is low, we're doing two things at once here and, um, I'm not sure what the ultimate outcome would be. Um, and I know Mr. Africa, uh, has spoke about how the department would absorb it. And then we've talked a little bit about, um, or Mr. Africa mentioned some of the permits and inspections that they've had to, had to do. And that just kind of triggered a memory for me, um, in the past 10 months, the emails that I've gotten from constituents who have paid for inspections and permit of a residential project for whatever reason, and then COVID hit. Um, and they have had to pay an enormous amount of money out of pocket for the extension of projects. Um, they've had to go back and forth with loans from banks. So I think of those folks and I think of other industries that were in the process of building or developing or starting a new restaurant or retail business when COVID hit. And they may or may not have, um, applied for grant money. Um, but they certainly haven't been, um, given refunds. So I, I struggle with handling one particular type of business a very different way than we have handled any other type of business in this scenario. Uh, but I also understand the intent of the bill and I can appreciate trying to look out for a business. So that's kind of where I am. Not really a question, but, um, if you have any thoughts and response.
Go ahead, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I don't have my flags at all today. Um, I think the, the reason that, um, that this, I, I certainly understand, um, oh, sorry, Lisa Rodvian, District 6. I certainly understand my colleague's, um, concern about, is this a, you know, shouldn't we be providing sort of this relief to, um, to all different businesses? My, my concern and the reason that I, uh, specifically targeted short-term residential rental hosts is because they are very small businesses. They're, they're smaller than small businesses. They're usually, um, an individual, um, or maybe a couple or maybe a family, but usually no bigger than that, um, who is, um, you know, renting out a room in their home, renting out, um, a space on their property. And so, um, you know, it, it really does, um, you know, and, and as, um, Mr. Barron from the administration mentioned, this is, um, one, and I would say like restaurants, um, who have, uh, been hit extremely hard. I would say this is maybe akin to, um, and I'm, I apologize if I don't remember if this was in action by the city of Annapolis or by the county, but certain licensing fees waived for, um, the, the calendar, the 2021 calendar year. Um, this isn't obviously waiving it completely. It still leaves $100 in place, but it does bring it down dramatically. And ultimately, um, you know, I think hosts will be And ultimately, you know, I think hosts will be, you know, hosts looking at this fee when they may not really have a revenue. I think the possibility that hosts would be sort of pushed to operate sort of underground as opposed to on, you know, the platforms like VRBO and Airbnb is something we, we ultimately don't want to do. We, we want them to be able to produce revenue for themselves and for the county, for, you know, for their, for their patrons to ultimately pay the tax to the county. So it really is in the intent to, to be emergency economic relief. With also the possibility down the road that, you know, again, because this is brand new. This isn't, you know, these aren't fees that we've had in place for a decade. That we can examine them once they've been in place and see, are these the right fees? Did we set it at the right level? Is the $200 per year reflective of the actual cost to administer the registration? And I just also want to remind that, remind my colleagues that registering, e- even though, you know, this is handled through inspections and permits, it's neither, there is neither an inspection or a permit. It's, it's simply a registration. So there's no inspection involved. There's no permit required. It's simply a registration. And the registration is required. But it's intended to be temporary. An emergency in nature with the possibility of reevaluation down the road.
Any further questions before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, thank you all. Let's go ahead and move on to Bill Number 121.
Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Romans and Mr. Heim from Central Services and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. As you all recall, Resolution 18-20 was placed, placed a ballot question before the voters. The resolution was passed over the summer in July of last year. It became ballot question D. Ballot question D was approved by a margin of 66 to 34% in the 2020 general election. The ballot question allows the council to increase the threshold for small procurements from $50,000 to $100,000. Bill 1-20 is bringing that question before you. Setting the small procurement threshold to $100,000 was part of a consultant review back in 2016. They found three benefits to reduce the time to procure goods and services by allowing county agencies to obtain three bids for their needs and allow the purchasing staff to focus their efforts on higher value procurements and to increase the outreach to minority business for procurements where preparing a formal bid is a barrier to receiving county contracts. So we have our experts here from Purchasing and, and Central Services. So happy to answer any questions you might have today.
My colleagues.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you acknowledge me, Madam Chair?
I did. Could, is my audio completely dead or something?
No, no, it's just a little spotty. Or maybe, who knows? Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick, you know, one of the things we've talked about during the Charter Amendment debate about this was the percentage of, do we have the percentage of contracts that would fall below the $100,000 threshold? That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you for the question, Pete Barron with the Administration. I believe we did pull that up. Mr. Heim, do you happen to know that off the top of your head?
We have the number of actual contracts that would impact out of the total as a whole. I think, you know, again, I can get you exact numbers, but I believe that would be somewhere around. I, I, like, let me, let me do some research. I can get you a specific answer on the total number of contracts and then this portion of it. But we, we did provide the details related to the, what the numbers that would impact from the change going from 50 to 100.
I'm sorry, who? Oh, Ms. Romans.
Hi, Christine Romans, Director of Central Services. I, I can just add, we don't have a specific answer to Ms. Pickard's question, but I can tell you that 17 procurements would fall between 50,000 and 100,000. So that would have been kind of the range of procurements that might have been impacted should we move this threshold from 50 up to 100. So the number is 17, but I don't have the percentage, and we can certainly get that information for you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I know when we had gone through this conversation on the Charter Amendment, I've been particularly concerned about this, this possibility of sort of additional fraud, waste, and abuse that comes in when you raise that threshold. But, Mr. Barron, you were referring just to a report that came out in 2016. My only question is, would you mind sharing that full scope of that report so that I can take a look at, at what you just read and, and what else might be in there?
Sure, I'm gonna double-check with Ms. Romans, but I see no reason why we wouldn't.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Sure, Christine Romans, again, Office of Central Services Director. Yes, we have that report, and it was provided to the council that was seated at the time. So we're happy to provide that to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
That would be a lot easier than asking Mr. Pruski to take through his emails, I think. Do you, any, any questions on this bill? Okay, if not, thank you to everybody who came this morning, and we'll move on to 2-21. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think this bill is fairly straightforward. Had a constituent come to me who was looking to locate a sanctuary for its parrots, I believe. And because our code is written the way it is, without an express allowance for a bird sanctuary, they can't locate. They have all sorts of accreditation sort of nationally and things like that. And they said, is this something you'd be willing to take a look at? So I spoke with Planning and Zoning to get their thoughts on kind of what, where they believe an appropriate place to locate would be and what other conditions are such that they might recommend. And what you see here is essentially the back and forth with planning and zoning. So it's, it would become a conditional use in RA and RLD. They are limiting, you know, they're requiring minimum sizes, setbacks for any kind of outbuildings. It's not a commercial venture. I want to make that very clear. This is not something where there would be a lot of visitors. This is purely sort of rehabilitation and a sanctuary type for birds that have been injured and, and things like that. With that, I'm happy to take in questions, or Planning and Zoning wants to add anything on to that. Ms. Miller had been particularly helpful going back and forth.
I'm sure. Pete Barron with the Administration. As the sponsor mentioned, we have Ms. Miller from Planning and Zoning, Ms. Catlet from Animal Care and Control, and Ms. Kenny from Law here. Appreciate the sponsor's work with OPZ. This bill is well-defined. We are, we have no opposition to the Bird Sanctuary bill. And Ms. Miller, feel free to, to add any of your observations from your work with, with the sponsor, please.
Thanks, Mr. Barron. Lynn Miller. I don't think I have anything to add at this point. I think the bill's draft is pretty straightforward, and we're just available to answer any questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just have a few quick questions. So my first question is, would the bird staying at this type of sanctuary be released? Because the language says kept and given care. So I wasn't sure if there was an opportunity to release, if it was like an injured animal. That was my first question.
So Jessica Hare, District Seven. I don't know. That's a good question. To my understanding, the birds in most instances are kept for life until they're, I suppose if they could heal and be healthy, I would imagine that would be sort of pursuant to any of the accreditations they have nationwide and how that's handled. DNR might have additional thoughts on that, but they would be subject to any of the restrictions and requirements by DNR as well. So those would all apply if that's, if that's your concern.
Madam Chair, if I may follow up. So the reason I ask these questions is I had worked with a constituent a few years ago, very early on in our term, and just trying to understand how this all plays out and if maybe there's an opportunity to address two issues. So my, my other two questions are more related to the structures and the placements on the lot. So if we're talking about three acres, if someone's residential home was at the back of the three acres and their option was, or really only option was to place whatever structures for the sanctuary on the front or the side, is that something, do we have zoning, zoning language to address that? Or is that something that any, Office of Planning and Zoning is not concerned with just because of the sheer size of the lot?
Hi, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. The bill as written would allow, would require that any dwelling is occupied by someone who's involved in the operation of the bird sanctuary. So I think with three acre minimum lot size, I, no, I don't think that we are, that we're concerned about that being an issue.
Okay, and, and what I have envisioned in that scenario is, my understanding is, if there was a situation where a bird was being rehabilitated for release, I think there is a requirement for outside structures for kind of practice flying, if you will. I don't know if that's what they call it in the bird sanctuary world. So I just want to understand if that were the case and someone from a sanctuary needed to build something like that. Depending on the bird size and the amount of birds, it has to be a certain size to allow for free, free flying. So I was just thinking kind of along those lines, not of the actual residential property, but of the structure that may be necessary to train and release into habitat again.
Right. Excuse me. The setbacks that apply to principal structures in the two residential districts that would be affected by this bill, so RA and RLD, would apply to the structures where the birds would be kept and inhabited. In this case, because I believe those would be considered the principal structures for this use. And sorry, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning.
Okay, that makes sense. That, that answers my question. And, and I just have one more related to the actual structure where the birds may be kept. And this goes for both the indoor and outdoor area, if there was an outdoor area. Who would be responsible for checking on, I guess, the security of those structures to make sure that the birds don't get out by accident? I don't think anyone who enters into this type of operation is operating with negligence. But just out of general curiosity, would that fall on the accreditation agencies or zoning or animal control?
Jessica Hare, District Seven. Ms. Catlet might be able to answer this? I believe DNR is the one who oversees that enforcement side of things.
That's correct, DNR.
Okay, perfect. I'm done.
Does anyone else have any questions on Bill Number 221? No? Okay. Well, thank you all. We will fly on to Bill Number 321.
You had to do it.
I had to do it. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This bill is fairly self-explanatory. The Civil Emergency Section of our code was written into code in 1968. It was introduced slightly after the riots related to the killing of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., but the conversation had started prior to that situation. It actually stemmed from a snowstorm in 1966 where the county executive at the time had declared a state of emergency. There was an ensuing legal case where the county lost in court when the judge determined that the county executive at the time did not have the authority to institute a state of emergency. Our code didn't allow for it. So that is where this area of our code comes from. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barron or anyone who has further knowledge than I don't. I don't believe any county executive or council has ever utilized this section of the code. And it has not been amended, all but once. It was actually amended in 2016. The language was put in line with the definition of civil emergency under the state. This bill is not retroactive. It is very forward-thinking. I think i- if we look at the history, as I mentioned, it was, civil emergencies were put into our code because of a specific situation. And now that we are 10 months into the implementation of a civil emergency extension, I think it's time to kind of revisit and implement changes that this council may appropriate at this time.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Or, Mr. Barron, would you like to share the Administration's position?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Barron with the Administration. It'll come as no surprise. The Administration opposes this bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Pickard.
Allison Picker, D2. So we need to change the code for change sake? Or there's something specific in the code that you feel needs to be addressed? I say that because at the governor's press conference this week, he was asked a similar question that Republican lawmakers are questioning the way the state of emergency, civil emergency powers at the governor, at the state level are currently codified. And his response, I have to say, is probably the first time in a long time I 150% agree with the governor. Let me quote what he said. Bear with me. In response to being asked about giving the legislature more authority in times of civil emergency, state emergency, he said, and I quote, "That would be about the dumbest thing I've ever heard about in my life." So we've been at this, we've been here before. This is the third time we're talking about a civil emergency and that powers that I truly believe belong at the executive level. I think most people do. I don't need to go into why. But we've addressed it. This will be the third, fourth time we're talking about it on this council. So that's how I feel about this bill.
This is Sarah Lacy. I actually, I just wanted to convey to my colleagues. I support the idea of this provision and doing some serious thinking about what would make sense for, for forward. I wonder whether this particular type of reform might not be something that we consider bringing to, to, you know, referendum in the future. Very concerned about making this kind of change right now. I think it's hard for us to have an objective viewpoint. Even though it's been 10 months that we've been in this, in this crisis, Bill 421 might, is kind of parallel to that, which is, we do need to have some kind of doubt when an emergency actually is, is over. And I think, you know, that's a difficult question, you know, if you think about, you know, if a hurricane comes and destroys your town. You know, if you think about, you know, if a hurricane comes and destroys your town, well, when is the emergency over? Factors that that play into that, which also, to me, weighs on the side of, well, the executive should have more authority. But I I agree that there has to be, you know, a bit of a check. There's a danger that, you know, a disaster since he could go on too long. I'm just not sure this strikes the right balance and that right now is the right time to do it and that it's to do it. But I would welcome continuing conversation. I think it's a really important question for overall the stability and what the public feels is the legitimacy of of what our government. You know, all of us sitting here believe everything is being done with the utmost of good intentions. It's for the public to have trust in what we're doing in an emergency. So that's my piece on the bill. Oh, the background now. It's it's up. Okay. Please, you have the floor.
Did you say Feedler?
I did.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if we even have to use flags during work session. It's just kind of programmed. So Amanda Feeder, District Five, you know, I understand both of your positions. And this is really to kind of come at the discussion from a different angle. If you don't support it, you don't support it. If you're open to the discussion, you're open to the discussion. If you support it, you support it. But I think being the first council to ever go through a civil emergency, the first council to ever approve an extension of a civil emergency, a section of our code that was written in nineteen sixty-eight, and for all intents and purposes, sounds like it was an intended section of the code for a very brief period of time. I think we owe it to this council, our constituents, and future councils and county executives to really examine and be reflective over the past ten months. And that was really the impetus behind the introduction of this bill. So, thank you.
I also have a comment. And if not, I'd like to bring up bill four. I realize the sponsor is not is not here, but since this is our opportunity to be able to ask openly, I just have one question to ask, and perhaps, Mr. Barron, you could of some kind. My my thinking is, one of the things I don't remember really yet, and I I'm not sure that it's even been determined, is from the health perspective, when do we see is over? Or when is it so significantly better that some of the emergency measures are not are truly not needed anymore? And so in context of Mr. Volkey's bill, if the administration had given any thought to a termination clause that might be based on a rate of, you know, it's reported today, I think our community transmission rate is the highest of the Big Eight counties. It's up to like sixty-four point, which is huge. And I I think, you know, there are a lot of people who are concerned that, you know, we was about emergency back when our community spread was ten, you know, the rate was ten. My thought was, if we had some kind of health-based metric in in the termination of the emergency or of the termination of part of the emergency, we might actually help people have an incentive to to do the things that we're, you know, asking them to do more than they more than people are already wearing your mask and limiting your activity, limiting going out outside of that sort of thing. I think part of the fatigue is people have no idea when this will end. And if we think about some some limits that people could look forward to, that could really help.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. I think you hit on a on a really important point. We are all tired of this. There isn't a single person in county government, a single resident, that doesn't want this to be over. I'm I'm certain of it. A- as to the question of of a specific health metric that would would trigger a a change, I'm gonna ask Mr. Trumpbauer. We we weren't able to get Dr. K here for the work session. So I'm gonna see if if Mr. Trumpbauer can can do his best to try to tackle that question.
Thank you, Chris Trumpbauer, Senior Policy Advisor for County Executive. Just just to be clear, though I have a degree in chemistry, I am no stand-in for Dr. Nulash. So don't put me on the spot therapy. But I can say, Madam Chair, your question is excellent, and it's it's something that we have spent a lot of time thinking about as well. And I I am gonna try and channel what I've heard from Dr. Colian Araman when when we've been discussing this. And that is, the challenge is that there is there is no one particular metric that we can put a pin in and try and get there. Because we can, we can look at the case rate, you know, the seven-day average per hundred thousand residents. We can also look at hospitalizations. We can look at deaths. And then now there's another variable that's starting to emerge, which is perhaps as important or even the most important is the vaccinations. So so the health officials will look at looking at all these things together. And unfortunately, I don't, I don't think that they advise kind of picking one to to set a point as a target, even though we fully share your goal of of wanting to pick a time in the future where we can start to move past the situation that we're in. And the other challenge with with setting a specific static metric is that, as as you see, just let's take the case rate as an example of a metric. You know, it tends to jump around and and bounce. So there's there's certainly a potential where on any given day we could meet the metric goal that would trigger some relaxation or some other policy action. But then it's conceivable the very next day it jumps back up. And we we don't, we don't really want to get in a situation where something can toggle like that. And of course, you can try and put, you know, buffers in 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 the triggering and things like that as well. And again, those are all things that we've been discussing. But at this point, I don't, I don't think what I understand from from the health folks is that we'd be comfortable doing that. But it is something we'll continue to discuss and look forward, and maybe we will hone in on on policy like that in the future.
Ms. Pickard.
Allison Picker, D two. You know, we're talking about our code. This bill relates to our code, not to any particular civil emergency. You know, we have the opportunity, the next time the state and the county need to declare a civil emergency, to look at how we do that a little differently. Back in April, we signed a, we gave the county executive the emergency powers concurrently running with the state's civil emergency. The next time we're in a in a civil emergency or a pandemic or whatever, a tsunami, who knows what might come our way, we can look at it differently. But right now, we're in the middle of a civil emergency. And diffusing leadership down to the seven of us on this council as part-time legislators, getting partisan and provincial in our decision-making, is the worst thing we could possibly do. Maybe I feel that way because my district has extremely high case rates, and we're the ones filling BWMC, but I don't know. But I can't even see some of my colleagues using their platform to talk about wearing masks. So there's absolutely no way that I think the seven of us on this council or or the council in ten years are equipped to handle an emergency as the executive branch is.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. I actually just wanted to quickly say I I agree with Councilwoman Lacy that I think she's hit on an important piece, which is no matter what we did ten months ago, there is clearly now, we've been in it for ten months. We've had the ability to see constituents and their reactions and how they're feeling. And I think part of leadership includes laying out various plans, metrics, goals, et cetera, to the best of our ability. And I do think one of the struggles that so many people have with this is that it did start out as a two weeks to flatten the curve, and then it was a bit longer than that. And then the closures extended and now and sort of the 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 goalposts keep changing. And I can understand from a health perspective why Dr. K wouldn't necessarily want to pigeonhole himself into specific, we're only gonna look at case rates, or we're only gonna look at vaccinations. But I do, I agree with Councilwoman Lacy that I think in in some sense, this council, the next council, whatever it might be, having those kinds of goalposts in place can be helpful not only for us, but also for the executive branch and for all of our constituents. And I I think it's it's a really important consideration. This was the first emergency that we all had to consider, and perhaps we were not. It's not something we were thinking about at the beginning when it was sort of such a new, novel concept. But certainly, termination of the emergency is a key factor that everyone has to think about at what point. And maybe it's a combination of vaccinations and case rate or something else. But I just, I just wanted to say, I think it was a, it was a very, it was a very good point, and it caused me to think about kind of, if not now, then when? Because at some point, there's a, there's a when. So that's all. I just wanted to say I supported that, and I I thank you for that comment.
Thank you. Does anyone have a comment at this time? Seeing seeing and hearing not item on our agenda. So thank you to everyone for being here today. We will see you again at six PM on Tuesday, June twenty twenty-one. Please take care and stay safe out there. Have a good day.